Okay, council, we have an agenda that's been circulated. I'd like to make a couple of minor changes to that in consultation with the applicant on eight one and eight two. We've asked to withdraw the item from consideration for tonight's meeting. And so eight one and eight two have been withdrawn at this time. They'll they'll come back on another agenda. The other item is item eight point six. This is the naloxone report from council back. I'd like to move that ahead of the financial plan, if I may, so we'll we'll consider eight point six before eight point five. It allows us to send some staff home rather than going through the the financial plan and deliberations. And so I see a phone number that's come in. Is that perhaps councillor Murray? Well, I'm going to carry on. So with those amendments in mind, somebody move adoption of the agenda moved by councillor Forbes, second by councillor Hanson, prepared to call the question. All in favor. Contrary minded, motion is carried. The next is the minutes. We do have sets of minutes circulated from the the November eighteenth, January seventh, and February twenty fourth, regular meetings of council. Any errors or omissions from those meeting minutes is presented. None will will some move by councillor Forbes, second by councillor Back, prepared to call the question. All in favor. Contrary minded, motion is carried. At the front end of any regular meeting of council, we receive, we set aside a time of up to thirty minutes for members of the public to raise issues of concern to them. And we do start with a sign up list through the clerk's office leading up to the meeting. At this point, I only have one person who signed up to speak ahead of time. So we have Robert Blaney is going to be our first speaker this evening. We have plenty of time. If anyone else would like to add their name to the list or raise their virtual hand, we'll get them into the queue to speak after. Robert Blaney here. Welcome. Come on down. I'm going to have you sit at the desk here so we can get a microphone on you and.
Good evening, worship council. Mine is not of concern, but an introduction to eight point four on the agenda tonight. My name is Robert Blaney. I'm here to introduce item eight point four, the agenda thirty seven twelve to thirty seven eighteen Edgemont Boulevard, or by its project name, the Magnolia. I'm a partner of the ownership group of BZG Edgemont, as well as one of the lead designers in conjunction with our architecture firm ATA Architects, specifically Annie Territt, who joins us tonight via video conference. Our planner Liam Butler has guided us and the team at DMV seamlessly, and I look forward to him describing the technical data behind our OCP compliant project this evening. Your overall design philosophy and planning of the Magnolia started with one question. What is it about Edgemont Village that makes it so special? And the answer to that was community. This is where the Magnolia started, and our philosophy behind the site planning led to a community within a community for our development. The Magnolia is tastefully designed with residential, single family approach and feel. Each of the six proposed buildings resembles what looks more of a single family house rather than multiplied townhomes or row homes. The individual buildings allow for a multitude of benefits to future residents and surrounding neighbors, mainly allowing natural light to filter in and through the buildings, allowing one third of the units, in fact, to have three walls of windows. The Magnolia focus on accessibility. The team worked tirelessly on producing a livable product for a wide range of future residents. The Magnolia features a mix of one to three bed townhomes and are accessible. The elevators feature from the underground parking to the shared courtyard where all units' main entry doors are located. Further, there are no steps to the courtyard for residents or guests entering off Edgemont Boulevard. Accessible parking has been provided, as well as options for one floor living on a number of the units, and the ability to retrofit elevators in most of our floor plans. The Magnolia boasts lush landscapes and space paid special attention given to the property lines shared with neighbors where privacy is always an agenda. The architectural style is out of modern traditional. Respect to timeless details were accomplished, and its ability to complement surrounding architecture was paramount. All new projects have their fair share of challenges. The design group at Magnolia faced every challenge head on and believe the outcome aligns with DMV policy, neighborhood input, and above all else, a tasteful contribution to the community at Edgemont Village. I, as well as Annie Territt, are here to assist with any questions you may have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. And at item eight point four, we'll, if there are questions, we'll try to get them answered at the time. Would anybody else like to address the council? Checking with virtual attendees, we have Corey Cost. Can we move Corey Cost over to the panel, please? And I have confirmed to councillor Murray can now hear the proceedings. Should say this meeting is being held in a hybrid fashion. That means members of the public, council and staff can participate in the meeting either in person or virtually. And we've now confirmed that councillor Murray can fully participate in the meeting. So we have six members of council here today. We have regrets from from councillor Ma. Unfortunately, his attendance could not couldn't make that happen. Corey Cost, can you hear me?
Yes, your worship. I can. Just this is just for your information only. When the video started broadcasting, it was mute, and when people started speaking, it was still muted. And the only person I could hear was Lisa Muri. And when she left shortly thereafter, the sound of everybody else came on. So this is a most peculiar event. One's locking the other one out just for your information. Thank you.
Appreciate that, but you can fully hear the meeting now and all the participants at this point?
As soon as Lisa Muri started to re to go go away, as it were, and reroute her system, then the audio became available for the rest of you.
Okay, we'll have to investigate that. Would you? Do you have any comments for the council meeting?
No, none that I could fit in in two or three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cost. Anybody else like to address the council meeting this evening? Equipment for you. Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on with the regular part of the agenda. As noted in the council packages, release of closed meeting decisions for some appointments to a number of committees, that's been listed there. And so we're going to move on to section eight, reports from councillor staff. As I said at the beginning, eight point one and eight point two have been withdrawn from this evening's meeting. So the first item up for discussion is eight point three. This is development permit forty point one eight fifteen ten to fifteen thirty Crown Street and four forty Mountain Highway. And this is for consideration of issuance of a development permit. Do we have a comment from staff? We have Yan Zhang here from staff. Welcome when you're ready.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. I'm just going to pull up my speaking note here. And I only have a very quick, brief introduction. And if I may have Liam help me to have the image of this application pulled up on the on the screen to share, please.
Something broke.
Yeah. So. Yeah.
Maybe alt tab. Can you press alt tab? Oh, no, there's only one instance open. There's something wrong with the presentation.
It's, I think we can go ahead with it because what I really have on the screen is just the image that is included in the report itself. So I'm just going to go ahead and quickly introduce this development permit application. So this is application for fifteen ten Crown Street and four four zero Mountain Highway, for which council had given rezoning approval on February twenty fourth last month. So the application has been evaluated against the three key sets of guidelines, namely form and character DPA, energy, water conservation, and greenhouse gas emission reduction DPA, and then protection from hazardous conditions for creek hazard DPA. And so the design of this project was fairly advanced at the rezoning stage. And so at this DP stage, there are just some minor tweaks. And staff consider overall the proposed design have very well resolved massing, and particularly very well designed frontage along Mountain Highway in the Link Creek Town Center. Of note, the project is very permeable in that it provides a muse way to the north of the site, joining the southern portion of the future Town Center Plaza and linking Mountain Highway to the future Marine Park. And then we also, yeah.
Sorry, the Edgemont presentation went back up on the screen again. We just want to make sure that that's not confusing the matter. Set off the screen there.
Yeah.
We'll try again. Sorry. Carry on.
So also, there is a mid block of breezeway separating the tower form to this from the south to the mid rise portion to the north. This will allow pedestrian to go from mountain highway frontage to surface parking court off the lane at the back. In terms of building sustainability, the building will be designed to step three of the BC Energy Step Code with a low emission system that is emission level three, meeting our green building standards. And all the building components will also be designed to the FCL, the flat construction level, identified for the north, mid, and south portion of the site with all habitable spaces above the FCL. So mayor and council staff have reviewed this DP application and found it generally meets relevant design guidelines and recommend its approval. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I will just say again, for development variance permit, this is not the rezoning. Rezoning has already occurred. And so you know, development permits cannot be unreasonably withheld. So if you are going to vote against it, we need to know your reasons why. And so we'll put that out. I'll be moving the staff recommendation that the permit be issued seconded by councillor Back. No further comment from me, I believe, to the report. They've met the technical requirements of the zoning and of the building, the development permit request. So I'll be supporting the recommendation. Councillor Back, additional comments? Okay, would anybody else like to address this matter? Bearing none, going to call the question. All those in favor. Contrary minded. Motion is carried and permit is issued. Thank you very much. Now we're on to Edgemont, which we apparently have a working slide deck for. So now we're on to item eight point four. This is rezoning by law eight seven three two for a twenty one unit townhouse development at thirty seven twelve to thirty seven eighteen Edgemont Boulevard.
Good evening, mayor, members of council, and members of the public. My name is Liam Butler, and I'm behalf of staff. I'd like to do a brief presentation. The application proposes the redevelopment of the site with twenty one two story strata townhouse units across five buildings and one community amenity building included underground parking. The proposal is seeking a zoning bylaw amendment. The rezoning by law eight seven three two is recommended for first, second, and third readings. In accordance with the provisions of the Local Government Act, as the rezoning bylaws consistent with the official community plan, a public hearing is must not be held. Our presentation is eleven slides long and approximately six minutes in length. The site is located on the northern side of Edgemont Boulevard, situated between Catalina Road and Edgemont Village Center, shown in pink at the bottom right hand side. The property is approximately two thousand seven hundred and sixty five square meters in size. The site is surrounded by ground oriented townhouse development. To the north sit low rise apartments as part of the manor development shown in blue. To the west is a seven unit townhouse development in green. The subject site is detailed in red, and the site shown origin to the east is part of the Shalaw Gardens, which is listed in the district's community heritage register. The subject site is in a dilapidated state and is subject to a demolition permit. The site is currently zoned RM one. Rezoning by law eight seven three two proposes to create a new CD one five five zone tailored specifically to this project prescribed permitted uses and zoning provisions. There is also an existing site in plan, a side area for this site, which will be removed as part of the rezoning process. The site is currently designated RES three in the OCP, which is intended for predominantly ground oriented multifamily housing, including duplex, triplex, and attached row houses. The proposal meets the OCP intent through townhouse development at point eight FSR and is proximate to a village center. Looking at the site plan now, as shown in red, the proposal is for twenty one strata townhouse units in five buildings plus one community many amenity building shown in the center of the site outlined in blue. These are all set above an underground parking for forty two vehicles, including five visitor spaces. The townhouse units consist of six one bedroom, ten two bedroom, and five three bedroom. Each unit contains private outdoor space, and there are two shared outdoor amenities spaces, one outside the community amenity building and one on the western boundary of the site, containing the partially covered outdoor barbecue area. Shown in red above, the vehicle entrance, the single level underground parking is at the southwestern corner of the site along Edgemont Boulevard. As detailed in blue, there are three stair access points and one elevator located in the top right are available for pedestrian access from underground to ground floor. The primary pedestrian access to the site is from Edgemont Boulevard between building C and D. The remaining three additional buildings and common amenity building are set behind and accessed by a private path from Edgemont Boulevard, connecting to an internal landscape courtyard. A virtual and in person public information meeting was held in September twenty twenty four in accordance with district policy. During this period, twenty three comments were received with majority in favor of the proposal. Key support comments are they like the significant outdoor areas for the units, people like the provision of multifamily housing near Edgemont Village, and lastly, they like the range of unit sizes meeting different family needs. The key concerns include a loss of a heritage feature, the northern boundary treatment, and insufficient onsite parking. The responses are as follows. Some raised concerns regarding the demolition of the heritage building as part of the proposal. The condition review report prepared by the heritage consultant provided an examination of the condition of the existing four plex on site. The recommendation from this determined that the existing condition is poor, and that meaningful heritage conservation of the property is no longer viable option. The building has become a nuisance for the neighborhood, and council subsequently given approval for its demolition. Some had a few comments regarding the landscape treatment and privacy impacts to the northern interface with the manner of development. As detailed above, the proposal will include a five foot high fence along with planting and a mix of conifers and deciduous trees along the northern boundary. This will provide a year round landscape screen between neighbors, reducing overlook and enhancing privacy between developments. As many surrounding residents drive, there were some comments received from the proposed onsite parking being insufficient. As shown in the table above, the proposed parking meets the zoning bylaw requirements, which is roughly two spaces per unit. As shown above, the proposal will benefit the community through several offsite improvements, including a new sidewalk, curb and gutter, and street tree plant along Edgemont Boulevard. In addition to standard district DCCs and metro DCCs, the proposal will contribute approximately a hundred and thirty five thousand dollars. In summary, this project proposes key multifamily housing that promotes aging in place and accommodates young families proximate to a village center. Staff are recommending the rezoning bylaws for first, second, and third reading in accordance with the Local Government Act. Thank you for listening. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Councillor Back, I see your hand up. Have you got a recommended motion?
Yes, your worship, I'll be moving the recommendation.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there a seconder? Councillor Hanson? Councillor Back, your comments?
Thank you very much. Thank you for the proposal or for your presentation tonight. I will be supporting this application. I think it represents a housing forum that there is a need for in various parts of the district, I think, particularly in a in a community like Edgemont Village. And we talk a lot at council about housing for young families and giving people an opportunity to to rent in our community, to have, you know, an opportunity to potentially purchase. But we talk less about the need for housing that will work for people who have lived in our community for years, many who have a significant amount of equity in their single family homes and maybe looking to downsize and stay in a neighborhood where they've been for years. And if their kids are fortunate enough, they're extended family and maybe grandkids live. I think this this represents that that form of housing in a location where, you know, given its proximity to Edgemont Village makes sense. I like lots of the aspects of this, the range of unit sizes, much, you know, that we've heard is how the local public supports this project as well. The fact that they do kind of resemble single family homes in the in the field, and that many of the units will allow that one level living that I think will be important for a lot of people here. I wanted to ask about the heating and cooling systems. Could you comment on that a little bit? Is it heat? I saw air conditioning or heat pumps or what? What does that look like?
Yep. Yeah.
I will also say that the applicant is here. They're probably more ready to answer those questions. Could this be to applicant as well?
I can, sure, whoever is prepared to answer.
I'll start, and then I'll get Robert to jump in as well. Yes, the proposal is seeking step four for compliance with the BC Energy Step Code. Some of the key features that I can talk to if everyone wants to jump in, then by all means. But floor reduced fixtures, high efficiency water tanks, exterior insulation, triple glaze windows, replanted the new trees to provide shade to open space areas for the passive design features as well.
Cover it. That covers it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yeah, so I'm very familiar with the site. I toured the site next to it with with the other part of Shalaw Gardens that were stratified and were in much different condition than the homes on this property. And so I do recognize, you know, when I hear the concern from the public that we're losing a bit of heritage for sure. But I think it's it's clear that these particular homes are at a stage where they do need to be replaced, and I'm I'm supportive of this proposal at this time.
Councillor? Councillor Hanson is the seconder. Do you have additional comments?
Yeah, just a few. Thank you, your worship. And please, I agree with all the comments of my councillor colleague councillor Back. Thank you for those. This proposal will result in twenty one townhomes, a mix of one, two, and three bedroom layouts. Based on my experience over the last ten years on council, this is the best we are going to see in terms of housing diversity for sites of this type. We're not going to see rental housing nor affordable housing in sites of this type unless those are created by the government with government funding, and that apparently isn't going to happen. The proposal does provide for a community amenity contribution of a hundred and thirty five thousand eight hundred and twenty four dollars, which can be directed towards affordable housing. Just one question. I have visited the site, and I recall that in previous discussions before council about this site, there was discussion of terrible amounts of rats. We were hearing about the rats being, if I recall correctly, and I think I am, they were a reason why the heritage couldn't be preserved because there was just no way to eradicate all of the very, very many rats. And I am concerned that when the building's demolished, hundreds of rats will go into the surrounding neighborhood and find basements and so forth, though. To the proponent, Mr. Blaney, could comment on any plans that might exist to prevent rats leaving the site at the point of demolition?
And make a spot from there. Radicating rats.
Eradicating rats. Here we go. Yeah, when we perched the property through the courts, the 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 property was in a very dilapidated state. We had two renters, and we had two units full of squatters, and there was a lot of drug use and very unfortunate situations with local paramedics, fire departments, police departments. We even had a death while we were in ownership. So it was a very unfortunate situation. The rats were very apparent. So were the rabbits at the time, to be honest. When we did apply for our demolition permit as a group, and when we received that demolition permit, we officially were able to start the removal process of the squatters that were on site with not a lot of help from local PD. But when the paying tenants actually did vacate the building, after we provided them with six months of free rent to find a location, we went in there with hazmat suits, and we removed eight forty yard bins of debris with pitchforks. It was a sight to be seen. We have every wall. We have cut holes in the roofs. There is nothing left inside of those buildings whatsoever. We have hired road abatement companies to come in. There are no more rabbits, thanks to the coyotes, but the rats, and for the most part, you know, we have not seen the same number, the same amount. There's nowhere for them left to hide. All the drywall is gone. All the appliances are outside. The roofs are cut open. There's nowhere really for them to be. So I'm not expecting that when we tear down this roof or tear down this building upon for second, third reading, we will have a lot of that at all. So.
Thank you.
Councillor? Okay, thank you. Councillor Murray, your comments, please.
Mr. Blaney, I have a question for you. When did you retain the property? When did you? Were you successful in retaining the property?
So almost two years ago, April.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I'm I'll I'll support this application, but I I can't stress enough and just on the heels of councillor Hanson. I'm I just would really like to understand how we got here. You know, when Don Luxton originally assessed this property, this Hollingsworth designed building, there was a way forward in retaining part of it. And over, you know, a period of several years, the previous owner, you know, I'd love to know what happened. I'd love I'd love to know how we went from a building that we could have retained part of it, retained part of our heritage, you know, with this renowned architect, you know, whose work we're losing right, left, and center. And we could have had an utterly, you know, incredible application. And now we find ourselves here where there was a way forward. And I really think, Mayor Little, we need to, we need to go back and find out what went wrong. You know, if if it was, you know, did council not have the right information that we needed to be able to advance this expediently? You know, what was, what were the requirements in regards to the the maintenance of the previous structure in order to allow it to get to a place where we could look at a, you know, an opportunity to maintain while creating some density, new density? And then just have the neighborhood live with, you know, a building like this. We have a standards of maintenance bylaw. We've been talking about it for twenty five years, how it has zero teeth to be able to maintain anything in the municipality. It's very challenging. I I hear councillor Mackay Dunn in my ears, you know, being so frustrated in regards to a standard of maintenance bylaw. So I'm I'm I'm, you know, I may bring a report forward to ask for sort of an audit on this process and why we ended up where we ended up. You know, nothing to do with Mr. Blaney and his company. I appreciate the the design that you've put in. I find it very attractive. And certainly, we have to move forward, but I'm super disappointed. And I bet Mr. Blaney may have been had a great opportunity to to deal with a piece of architecture that is renowned and create a project that is unlike any other. But we've lost that opportunity, and I'd like to understand why. Thank you, Mayor Little.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Forbes, additional comments?
Thank you, worship. Just a couple. Like to point out, since we can't have public hearings anymore, that's why we're going one, two, three. I miss public hearings. But I really like this development. Twenty one units and townhomes. That's generally. But I I really like this development, twenty one units and townhomes. That's generally what has been being approved and is building up in Edgemont. And again, like Counselor Back said, it's it's an in-between sort of between a single family on a lot and condo. So families can do it. So I appreciate the range, the diverse range of bedroom units that you have in there. And I was a bit puzzled when I read the report and the comments that you had from the people about why they thought there wasn't enough parking. That's more parking than we usually put into development so that we approve of in developments. So, and also your offsite improvements, it's over a million dollars of offsite improvement, offsite improvements, which I think is really good. And and I would echo what Counselor Murius said, that I remember when this came before us and I just don't know how it got this bad. And we did lose a heritage building in there, but the picture says a million things. So thank you very much. I will approve of this.
Very much, Counselor Forbes. And just to follow up on your comment about public hearings. So in this case, it complies with the O C P designation of res three. So there is no public hearing in in this case. So it's not the council's necessarily waived that. It is waived by legislation from the provincial government. Just my own comments on the matter. I I I'm sure you've you've got a very attractive product here. It's probably going to fit in relatively well with the the community. Which, you know, I think is is interested in this kind of product in the neighborhood. So I agree with Counselor Back's comments on in that regard. And, you know, I just, the the challenge I have, you know, is that we're, you know, it, we still need to get into our mix of new developments of lower cost housing. You you can tell when the original Hollingsworth was in versus Hollingsworth, other modern inventory homes in Edgemont, which are absolutely beautiful, huge windows, rafters, posts and beam, views out of the canyons and other things. That this was even in its original designed to be affordable housing with a fourplex. And so, you know, the challenge is, you know, even though Hollingsworth had the ability to produce very high end, unique product, also took a time in his practice to create stuff that was on the lower end of the market and more consumable. This is going to be a pretty high end product. It it while it's a different form and that it's not single family housing, it's still going to be a very high end product. And I just want to put out there that, you know, when we're looking at developments in the Edgemont area, sure, we can lean into the very high cost of all of the neighboring properties around there, but it would be good to take some inspiration from from Fred that produces not only the high end product that's throughout the Edgemont community, but also intentionally create some that's simpler by design and manages the costs and expectations because through a very, very simple design. So I will be supportive of this. I think it's a welcome change to the deteriorating situation that is in that space. And so I'll be supportive of the motion. Counselor Forbes, I see your hand. I think that's from earlier. Okay. Would anybody else like to address the matter? Or to call a question? All in favor? Contrary minded, motion is carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Counsel, we did vary the agenda to move eight point six ahead of the financial plan. So I'm going to skip to eight point six at this time. All right. So on item eight point six, well, this was initiated from a a report from Counselor Back. We now have this report in. Ms. Walker, will you be making opening comments to the matter?
I will. Thank you through the mayor. This evening staffer reporting back on council direction on facilitating a naloxone program in the district. The council motion passed on July twenty second, twenty twenty four is included on page four hundred and eighty one of the agenda package with staff recommendations summarized on page four eighty four of the package. Given the breadth of the motion, staff took a number of things into consideration, including public health and safety, existing programming and implications for staff. Staff are also consulted with professionals, including Vancouver Coastal Health, our occupational health and safety team and fire personnel. Chief Danks and our occupational health and safety advisor, Tracy Gowens are both here to answer any questions. So this evening staffer looking for some direction from council and feedback on the staff recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Back. This is originally your motion. Can I look to you for a direction?
I'll move the recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a second on the recommendation? I'm happy to second. Counselor Back, your comments?
Thank you, Mayor Little. Thank you very much to staff for responding to my motion around facilitating a naloxone program, naloxone program in the District of North Vancouver. You know, I I was inspired to bring this motion forward by the tragic death of Sydney McIntyre Starco, the eighteen year old University of Victoria student who died in her dorm room of a preventable fentanyl poisoning death in January of of last year. In January of this year, just two, less than two months ago, there were a hundred and fifty two suspected unregulated drug deaths in the province of B C. This continues to be a toll on on every community. In January, that equates to about five deaths per day across the province. I believe it's incumbent upon us as a local government to do what we can to to prevent these sorts of deaths from happening. And I do support the recommendations in the report in terms of making some online training available for any employees who are who are interested in in taking part so that they can potentially save a life in in the instance of of an overdose that's happening in our community. And in terms of the other recommendations, I I certainly support as well. I think looking for any areas where, you know, this sort of training could could be beneficial is is something that we should be doing. And I think the idea of involving the business community as well potentially makes makes a lot of sense. So just want to thank staff for responding to my report and I look forward to to moving some of these initiatives forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, not much else to say. You know, we can always do more and we can always find ways to improve our processes to make sure that we have a safe community. I will, with the benefit of the fire chief here, ask sort of where we're at with with naloxone responses. The report identifies that you know, while the R C M P use the nasal spray, we're largely using the injection process for for our fire department. Perhaps you could talk a little bit about how we use it, when we use it, about how many times we use it, any just general comments like that?
Through the mayor, thank you for your question. I have just a general guide here on how many times we've responded to overdose calls for twenty twenty four, and that is ninety seven times. It doesn't specify if those are specifically for drug overdoses. They could be first pharmaceuticals or alcohol. I can confirm that we do use the intramuscular doses and that is because of the cost. They're about a third of the cost of the intranasal.
Just about, I think it was twenty seven dollars per or something like that versus versus just over a hundred, a hundred and thirty, I believe. Okay, and the reason why we don't do use the the nasal spray then is largely because of the per use cost. But how does R C M P get access to it?
I can't speak for the R C M P. It's a great question, but it is, it it has to do with cost and then also availability as well.
Okay. No, all right. Well, thank you very much. I'll be supportive of the motion. Counselor Hanson.
Yeah, thank you very much. My comments will be extremely brief. Thank you, Counselor Back for initiating this. Thank you to staff for following up. I mean, as Counselor Back commented, just a few statistics that you brought forward and there are other statistics in the report. Terrible problem and anything we can do at any level of government, including this level of government to prevent toxic drugs is a good step. And i- in my view, these are steps, the naloxone, greater distribution of naloxone is that will save lives. And the recommendations in the report are reasonable. Measured steps with respect to the distribution of naloxone and they're fully supported by me. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no further speakers. Prepare to call a question. All those in favor, contrary minded, motion is carried with Counselor Muri in favor. There you go. Thank you. All right, moving on to the financial plan. So at this point, we're moving on to item eight point five. This is bylaws eight, seven, three, seven, twenty twenty five to twenty twenty nine financial plan approval bylaw. And while I'm going to go to Rick, I would like to just start off on this that, you know, we obviously it's a very large process and takes a long time to lead up to to the sort of final stages that we're at. We have a few, a couple more steps, but this largely locks in the content and and envelope of the budget for this round. That doesn't mean we can't change things in future. What's of of most interest, I think, to staff and assist them the most is is this next year's exposure. And so that's the current year budget, not just the overall financial planning process. We we have a lot of flexibility over the course of a five year financial plan to make adjustments for things that happen at later years in a financial plan versus things that happen in that one specific year. So the focus is that this authorizes the staff to engage on this year's budget and then plan for the longer term targets and projects in the financial plan over the five years. But we do have many points along the way where we can make minor adjustments. It used to be that the the budget itself was fairly locked in document from the time you approved it and there was great consternation about being able to find sources of funds or move things around as priorities happen during the course of the year. And then about fifteen years ago, we moved to more of a rolling five year financial plan, which has left us in a situation where where we'll quite often do an update in the fall or at other times as necessary in order to be able to make sure the right money is in the right place when projects need to proceed. And so it's less about locking in on the five year plan and more about making sure that the the envelope that's being collected through the tax distribution workshop and process that's that's coming up, make sure that there's at least enough resources available for us to run for the next year. And so it's not always about the the specific projects that are identified in the five year plan. It's about the resources. That's the part that we actually have to pass by provincial legislation coming up is is the application of the the ability to draw the resources through our tax program. And so I know we spend a lot of time talking about the five year plan and future capital projects and such, but I mean, the primary purpose of this is to equip us for the decisions that we have to make around tax distribution coming up. So I did just want to say that because I know that we do spend a lot of time talking about the longer term later projects that aren't intended to start in the next calendar year. I get why we have those discussions. I just wanted to make sure that we know this is to meet the provincial requirements this year. So I'll now turn it over to Mr. Danilak. Do you have any additional comments to introduce the item before we take our opportunity to debate the matter?
Your worship, just to echo what you you just said, the purpose of this year's budget process, in addition to looking out over the five years to show, to demonstrate the projects and services that are included over the next five years, just to make sure we've met our revenue requirement to fund our operations and the projects for this year. The next step in the process would see tax distribution workshop on April fifteenth, where we'd be seeking direction from council on that and and bring back the tax rate bylaws. So we work back from that. And tonight we have the financial plan bylaw in front of council for first three readings and the adoption of these bylaws scheduled for April seventh. This financial plan can be amended anytime and it's typically amended twice a year. We have direction to come back this spring with some some options with respect to the gravel field conversions.
To that end, so I will be making a motion out of the gate. And I'd like to add some additional wording that recognizes the debate we had in the workshop with the council. And so I'll be moving the staff recommendation, but adding an additional clause that says and that without increasing the current five year budget, staff are directed to review and identify by spring of twenty twenty five options to include at least one gravel field conversion within the twenty twenty five to twenty twenty nine capital plan that includes partnerships and external funding sources. And so that was a product of a discussion that the council had in the workshop. And so I'll be moving the recommendation with with that. Counselor Muri, I have Counselor Pope signed it first. Did you want to second that or should I go to someone?
I'll second.
Counselor Pope, yeah, Counselor Pope has seconded it. But I can hear you, Counselor Muri, just she had had her hand up for your comment. And so what that additional clause says, so now I'm speaking to the motion. I'll be supportive of the financial plan. It's taken us a long time to be able to get to this point. We go through several meetings in the capital development, capital plan development process, starting back in the fall to be able to review the different priorities from previous years' financial plans, see what's still supported by the council, see what's changing in the changing marketplace. And so it's a long process that that we've contributed to to get to this point. And I'm I'm supportive of the envelope we've had, while it's frustrating that we're up at five and a half percent, including four and a half percent tax increase and one percent levy for asset renewal. It's it's a number that we still have to get down. We 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 were historically for a very long period of time to to with two percent with a one percent lift for asset renewal. And unfortunately, the inflationary environment that we've been in has pushed us up. I will recognize that this is higher than this year's inflation, partly in a lag due to some of the construction contract increases and also the pressure on our budget that we've seen from protective services specifically, where we've seen a fairly significant increase in the cost to deliver those services. In a large part driven by call volumes and a switch to the ECOM system for which, you know, is is a sort of a big one time change, but should give us good reliable service going forward. On the second clause, that without increasing the current five year budget, staff are directed to review and identify by spring twenty twenty five options to include at least one gravel field conversion within the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty nine capital plan that includes partnerships and external funding. This is a recognition that we we want to elevate the priority of this. This is of the production of an additional artificial turf field conversion from a gravel field, if possible. We do understand the pressure that our local sports teams are under to be able to get space and some of the artificial turf fields are oversubscribed and too busy. And so this will give us an opportunity to create additional space going forward. I I know that there's some impatience on within the community frustration, maybe a better way to say it, with how quickly this all can be delivered. The truth of the matter is five years ago, ten years ago, we were able to use the gravel fields. And it's only been a relatively recent change that the younger soccer teams have really put a lot of pressure to not use the gravel fields anymore, even though we had used them for, while I grew up playing on Myrtle Park and gravel as my host, my home field. And so it's to all of a sudden have your primary fields, all of a sudden not be acceptable to the sports teams, it's going to take you time to convert them over to something else that works. There's no question that the artificial turf fields have been popular with lighting options. We're able to take advantage of significant opportunity to put extra play hours on those spaces. And so the artificial turf fields that we have produced have been very well used by the community. They're just expensive, not only expensive on the front end to produce them, they're expensive to to maintain them, having to replace the carpet every ten years and probably replace and upgrade the drainage system every every twenty years. And so, you know, it it it's a challenge. It's going to take some time, but we're we're still recognizing in this that is that this is still a priority for us. So at this point, I I think that's all I have to say about it. I'll be supportive of this of this motion. Second on the motion, Counselor Pope.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to the finance team for producing this work. We are in very challenging times with Metro Vans' three billion dollar cost overrun in the North Shore wastewater treatment plant being downloaded onto North Shore rate payers and of course, the huge And of course, the huge economic uncertainty caused by the trade war. I support a five and a half percent tax increase in this motion for the budget. However, I have very serious concerns about the way we are spending money. I firmly believe that we could do better at finding savings. For example, ten million dollars is in this budget for renovating washrooms and the kitchen. At the Northlands Golf Course. I cannot understand how this could possibly amount to ten million dollars. And I don't understand why council would support that line item when other important facilities and services are being cut.
Can I just interject for just a moment? That's that number's been thrown around a couple of times, been said at a few meetings. And I'm pretty sure at the workshop, Nicola Chevalier said it's actually one point eight million dollars for the washroom kitchen project. Is that correct? So I just wanna clear up that that misinformation potential in the community, that the 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 washroom and kitchen program is one point eight. The rest of the money is going to the turf care center and other enterprise projects around the community, but.
Okay, I have no details about where that other money is going in the ten million. We've not been given that information in detail.
Would you like me to refer that to Ms. Chevalier to comment on?
If she can.
Chevalier, do you have additional comments on where that money is going to be allocated?
Through the mayor. I'm not sure I have the ten million. I have four point two million in the plan for. Both the Northlands Golf Course as well as Myrtle Fraser, and it's over the five years. So we've got a current project. Sorry. Got a current project at Northland's Golf Clubhouse. That's the kitchen and washing renovations, along with some other building renewals, getting it ready for new restaurant operator. In the later years, there's. Starting sort of in twenty twenty six, we have work starting at Myrtle Fraser. These are line placeholders for the caretaker home, the golf. How is it Myrtle Fraser as well as the turf center? At Myrtle Fraser. And then again, in the later years, twenty twenty eight, there's some fairly significant. Money set aside for the turf center at Northlands. The turf center. So Northland, this.
What's the turf center?
At Northlands, it's there where they. At Northlands, it's their operation center. Operation Center. Thank you.
That's how they they, yeah, they have all their gators and equipment and they use it to repair. The golf course and and do maintenance on the golf course.
Yeah. So these are renewal items for my asset management plan at the later years, you know, as we get closer, we really. Look at what needs to be done, how we're going to bundle it together into projects. And we get more refined, you know, timing and costing on it. But the really imminent project is one underway at the at the clubhouse in Northlands right now.
Okay, thank you. Overall, it's still a stunning chunk of money. And I I that's just one line item or maybe two in the in the capital plan. So I also do not believe taxpayers should be forking over sixteen million dollars for a new vehicle fleet for D N V staff. I have still not seen a detailed rationale for it. And in these tough times, I believe it should be reduced significantly. This budget may also grossly underestimate the cost of climate action and remediation. With only sixteen million for the next five years. We still don't know what the costs were for last falls atmospheric river. Council was supposed to get a report from a special D N V committee and paid consultant. That was tasked with determining cost estimates by the end of January. But we still don't have it. And we know climate remediation is going to keep escalating. So I was reassured by staff that there would be plenty of time for community input into this budget. And the community, I feel, has spoken, especially the soccer community, and they've been loud and clear. They want these gravel field conversions that were previously budgeted for. And so that is why I support the second. The second part of this bylaw that you have added. That was going to be part of my proposal this evening, that it be included in this actual motion. So the only question I have about it is that it says by spring twenty twenty five. Well, that's in three days. Spring twenty twenty five is March twentieth. So, I mean, I'd be very happy if this information could come back by spring of twenty twenty five. Which means March twentieth. Somehow, I think it's unlikely.
Yeah, so we can just clarify with Mr. Danilak, if that's possible, about. When you can have this delivered by and, I mean, the important part is that you're contemplating. That if there were changes to the budget, that would take place in July. And so really, we need to know the information before that point. Do you have anything more specific about the dates?
I can. There are three steps that were considered went before we, before the report indicated June. That is, we're in the middle of an audit, which will help us determine fund balances. The most, the resolution was for a minimum of one gravel field. And we're also looking at reductions related to tariffs, so we need to take a broader review of the capital spending. And there's also a review of the outdoor sport and recreation fees, which we, which will inform. The external funding portion of the resolution, and we expect to see that in early June. But we could work with them to try to get information ahead of that, so we can bring bring back options mid-June, early-June.
So in the spring, not at the beginning of spring, would would it? Give you more comfort if I specifically changed it to say June?
So the problem I'm concerned about is that if we say June, then we're not gonna get this report until the day it comes to us for a vote. And and it'll be like done. And we actually need this information long before then. So that we can have an informed discussion about it and thought about it and questions about it. So I would like to see wording that more reflects some urgency, which is, which would be as soon as possible.
Okay, I think that's understood. The challenge is the same financial staff that need to prepare this. Also have to do all of our filings with the provincial government in the interim time. And so I I think the urgency's, while it's not conveyed to your satisfaction in the wording. I I think it's understood by Mr. Danilak that that they have to have it out as early as reasonable, practicable amongst all of the other priorities. That they have to file for the budget in the next couple of months.
The problem I have is that, you know, we invited the public to give us input in this process. They did. They finance also heard extensively from not just me, but other members around the table. And wanting this change and others in the final budget. Nothing has been changed. We've gone through several months of processes now. And and there's been actually not one line item changed in 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 the capital plan or in in this budget. And I think that is. A rather gross misrepresentation of us seeming to be doing democracy when we're actually not. And that is why I'm here to say, this should be in tonight's budget. It shouldn't be in June, will maybe look like. I have a lot of frustrations surrounding this, and I know that our stakeholders do too.
No, I I understand that. I'm trying to show that we were concerned about that. Again, though, to my first comment the evening when I was giving direction on on this particular issue. The the field conversion you're talking about wouldn't likely take place until at least twenty twenty seven. And so it's, as it's not in this year's calendar year, it's not necessary for the filing that they have to do right now.
And the problem is, we put this in the budget in twenty twenty three. Three of them, three gravel conversions, which became two gravel conversions. And that is what the community is expecting. And now we're saying, gee, sorry, no. We have, we we may not be able to include it in our wording tonight. So and it won't happen even then until twenty seven, twenty twenty seven. And I feel that's just not good enough.
Right, councillor Hanson, your comments?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you to everyone who was involved. From the staff in the preparation of the twenty twenty five to twenty twenty nine financial plan. Thank you to all members of the public who provided their input. And thank you to everyone in council who has given comments and throughout the process, which I've found very useful. We've already had significant discussion of the financial plan at prior meetings. And as I stated in the budget workshop last Monday, I will support this plan, the five point five tax increase. However, going forward, I will not be supporting tax increases at this level. Going forward, I'd like to see tax increases limited, more in the range of three percent. With at least one percent of that earmarked for infrastructure. So in other words, returning to inflationary basis. I said last week, and I will say again now, that if keeping our tax increases to three percent. Requires cuts to services and reductions to funding to capital projects, so be it. These are challenging times financially with many district residents having to make do with less. If it is required, the district is simply gonna have to make do with less. Financially, these are extremely uncertain times. There's a brewing trade war. In advance of that, there were already economic strains in our community. And there's a potential for a significant disruption in the months and years ahead. District residents, in my view, deserve a local government that takes tax increases very seriously. And keeps our financial house in order. Going forward, I would like council, and this does. Continue on from comments of councillor Pope. I would like council to take a closer look at the budgeting process and at the district's costs in general. I'd like to see a top to bottom review of our spending priorities. So that council can be sure that the priorities of our budget are also the priorities of our community. Although this can be a painstaking and time consuming exercise. I believe that council needs to get more involved if we're to make the best decisions. As to how costs can be reduced and the budget potentially reallocated. On the topic of reallocation, I do support her looking at options to include at least one gravel field conversion. Within the twenty twenty five to twenty twenty nine financial plan. However, I will only support this amendment if it can be accomplished without increasing the overall budget. I'll leave it at that. I think I've made my general point known as to the budget. Again, I do thank everyone. I thank everyone who has provided comments throughout the whole process. The budgeting process is becoming more challenging. This is my tenth budget. And this one in particular is challenging. We're simply not able to accomplish all our goals within the. Envelope of taxation available to us. And I I think, I believe that going forward, this council will be spending more and more time discussing budgets and financial matters. So I look forward to achieving these lower tax increases. While at the same time preserving our most critical services at capital investments. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hanson. Next, I have councillor Beck followed by councillor Murray. Councillor Beck, your comments?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Little. I agree with all of my colleagues' comments so far. This is my second term on council, and this is the most challenging budget that I've seen. And I think I agree wholeheartedly with councillor Hanson. We're gonna have to take a closer look at. At these budgets going forward. I think I I would agree that I I'd like to, you know, be able to make this whole. Process clearer so that we know, you know, exactly where where spending is happening. That, you know, in in some areas, I I do agree, you know, we're gonna have to make some hard decisions. I should begin by thanking staff, recognizing that, you know, it's hard for us. It's extremely hard for our finance staff to try and balance all of these various priorities. In terms of this budget, I I support the five and a half percent property tax increase. But to think that this would become the norm is not something that I'm comfortable with either. I hope that we can, you know, be able to get get this down in the years ahead. And in terms of, you know, some of my concerns, climate action is near the top of the list. I think when we, you know, look back to the atmospheric river that we had in October. We talked to any, you know, residents who were affected out in Deep Cove or Indian River or or Lynn Valley in in my neighborhood. They they have some real concerns about how we're responding and how we're upgrading culverts. And so I'm very interested in that discussion that will be coming to council hopefully soon, about how we can. Priorities, prioritize some of those those climate action initiatives to to make sure that we're prepared. Because that's the reality that we're going to face, more and more of these frequent weather events in the future. I do very much support the amendment to the emotion there in in terms of prioritizing another gravel field conversion. We heard loud and clear from the user groups, you know, namely the the soccer community. That we need to continue to deliver on what we have promised. They're tired of fighting year after year. For these these sorts of investments in in sport in our community. And I know that gravel fields were were the norm at one time, but things change. I've got two kids that have just started their soccer this year on on a turf field, and they've loved every second of it. And so, you know, I hope that, you know, we can continue to create the sort of facilities that that so many young families benefit from in our community. And I'm glad that this was added, so I I do support that. And yeah, just recognizing that there is a ton of uncertainty right now. And so I think we've we've struck a pretty good balance here with this budget. But I look forward in the in the future to anything we can do to make this a more clear process. And and for us as a council to be able to go line by line and see where we're where we're spending and see how we can. You know, continue to live within our means and recognize that, you know, these are costs that are continuing to go up in so many areas. So, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Beck. I don't think the kids these days appreciate the gravel field like it was. I was on a very good team. And and which freed me up as a defenseman to make all kinds of sandcastles and drawings in the in the gravel. And I just don't think they appreciate that that opportunity anymore. Councillor Murray, your comments?
Thank you, Mayor Little, and thank you for advancing this discussion in regards to. The interests that council has in regards to these gravel fields and their conversion. I think the challenge for the the soccer community and the sports community is that they kind of just got bumped down the bottom of the list. They lost their place in line and they've made allowances to, you know, reduce one of those gravel fields for the Spirit Trail, for instance. And and then they just got pushed down to the bottom and for that, they're very frustrated. As I said in my previous remarks at the workshop, the sport council is restructuring themselves. And I I'm very encouraged in talking to board members that. There's going to be a new way for us to communicate with sport council, a better way for them to communicate with us. And 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 a process for us to learn from one another in conjunction with the Rec Commission and the city of North Vancouver. But this budget is is a lot more than a gravel conversion and finding money to fill gaps. You know, you turn on the news, you know, every twenty minutes and something else is changing in regards to these tariffs. And you've heard from Mr. Danilak that the the costs of these tariffs are going to impact everything. Everything in this country, this province, and for municipalities in this region. During the workshops, I noticed that the the recommend, or some of the the thoughts from staff were looking at increasing fees. Reducing services, I noticed a reduction in snow clearing. And adding more costs for our residents and visitors in regards to pay parking on the streets, all of which I'm gonna have a lot to say about. There is a frustration of priorities by our user groups and our stakeholders, but there's also a frustration of priorities from council members. And I'm sure there's frustration. And I'm sure there's frustration in, within the staff complement as well. We do not seem to be on the same page as, as much as we need to be. And the pendulum is swinging to the other side of the room, as it does so often in the municipality. It goes from one side to another. Rarely, rarely does it fall in the middle and find a, a level of balance. You know, our ongoing regional challenges are immense. The daily hive in the last couple of weeks have been reporting in regards to current funding levels for TransLink. And I, as I said a couple of weeks ago, I am concerned that those, those costs for TransLink and infrastructure is going to be laid at the, the feet of the taxpayer, and it go on property taxes. It's been talked about for, for years, for decades. I was around when TransLink was created, and there was a lot of pushback forever considering allowing funding to be allowed or to be applied to the tax levy. But we know that the federal government, and I, I, I'm not sure if this is, you know, I think all the parties in the federal government recognize that we place some of the lowest property taxes in the country, and yet do they recognize that we have one of the highest costs of living scenarios in the country? And those things have to find a balance as well. This budget, Mr. Stewart, needs significant review. It's bumpier than it's ever been, or a recent move to separate the utility, and I'll take my other two minutes, please, Madam Clerk. The separation of the utility has been very challenging for people to understand, and I know that staff are working on it, on, on that to put up on our website to make it more understandable, what they're paying, what the fees are, what part of the fee is contributing to the cost of the sewage treatment plant, et cetera. But we are, we've, we've gone to such a high level with this budget that I think even council is, is challenged. And, you know, I, I say that as, you know, one of the most senior members on this council. It's so high level, we don't really recognize some of the things that we used to see very clearly. You know, years ago, I remember engineering would bring forward the roads that they were going to look at pay, to page. We would have them laid out. There was more detail in operating, there was more detail in the capital plan. And I know council feels that the capital plan is the quickest way to find savings or swap out projects. But there's all sorts of reasons why those priorities are in there. I know Ms. Chevalier is working diligently at the asset management and looking at buildings that are coming to their end of the life and, and how we're going to manage those. Our, our O C P is driving a lot of this. We are looking at replacement and expansion of infrastructure. And, you know, let's cast our, let's cast ourselves twenty years from now, thirty years from now, forty years from now. You know, those decades go by pretty fast. You know, I, I wondered if I would be forty and still doing this job, and the answer to that question is yes. But it's gone by really, really fast. And so will the next forty years, when we have to start looking at replacing some of this infrastructure that we've received through community amenity contributions and the new amenity contributions, or whatever we're now calling them because of this provincial legislation. Everything is just going to continue to rise, and that's why we need to have a very clear understanding of what we can control to offset some of those costs that are out of our control. And do I have another two minutes coming, or is that the total six?
That's full time.
Okay, you see, even that goes so fast. So, Mr. Stewart and Mr. Danilak, Mayor Little, I look forward to the review. When we are going to get started, I will not be supporting anything above three percent in the next budget either. I think we really have to, you know, get, get down to business and start looking at this whole thing collectively and just start making some really hard decisions for our community.
Thank you, Counselor Murray. Counselor Hanson, I see your hand. Is that from before? Okay, Counselor Forbes, your comments, please.
Well, I really don't have any more. Everybody's pretty much covered everything I was going to say. And, and I'm of the same mind. Five, five point five is not sustainable, just, it's not sustainable. But I also recognize the hard job in finance of trying to find money when we're in such a volatile situation. We have the water sewage plant, and we, now we have tariffs coming at us, and our, our infrastructure is aging to the point where it's going to come do more and more and more that it, if we're going to have breaks, we're going to have to replace it. And the climate change is going to have an impact on that as well. So although I'm, I won't support five by, five point five going forward, I realize the difficulty and, and hope that we can get down. I know we're getting in some I T systems that will be able to help us see deeper into all of this. Mr. Danilak, you, you referenced that to me, and it's coming sometime July, maybe, maybe September. So, and I want to thank the finance department for all that they do, because having been on the other side of being an employee, past employee for the district, working in finance, I understand all the steps that you have to go through. I would like to say that, that even if we get down to three, it's going to be very challenging. And I think along with us understanding things better, we have to convey them better to the public to, 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 to explain to them that we have to live within their means, our means, because they're the main source of revenue that we have. So maybe expectations or levels of service or, or capital projects as often, those things are going to have to change and be looked at very, very seriously. So I don't envy the finance department, but I look forward to seeing what you manage to come up with. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Pope, were you full time before?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Yeah, go ahead.
I have one further question on the gravel field conversion. So if a finance comes back and gives us the options without increasing the five-year budget for enabling that conversion to happen, why do we have to wait till twenty twenty-seven to make it happen? Why couldn't it happen within this year?
Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, so through the mayor, currently, our priority focus on A T Fs is at Inter River and Argyle. So this year and next year, we're.
Hands with.
Hands with, my apologies. Handsworth and Inter River, thank you. So that's our priority for this year and next year in investing those A T Fs. Currently, the designs for the gravel field conversions are very early in their design stage. So we would still need to plan, progress designs, tender, get ready for construction. The same folks in the team that are delivering Handsworth and Inter River would be the same team that would deliver a gravel field conversion. So simply from a resource capacity perspective, how long it takes for us to design, we won't anticipate being able to get to the gravel field conversions until twenty twenty-seven.
Yeah, and that's what worries me. Thank you.
Okay. I will just, I'm glad Counselor Murray commented on the regional impacts question. There's no question we're under a tremendous amount of pressure from other sources at this time, well said by Counselor Pope about some of the issues in Metro Vancouver as You know, it's, it's hard. I, I really appreciate the comments councils made about how hard it is to sit at five point five, knowing full well that's a lot of pressure on our residents and that we have to find a way to bring those numbers down. And then, and, and it puts the pressure on us to, to address that issue as we go forward. I will also just say that fifty-two billion dollars in new spending by the federal government last year, that's almost three thousand dollars in additional spending for every single house in the country. Three thousand for every house in the District North Van. And with the provincial government at five billion dollars in new spending, let alone the nine billion dollar deficit, eleven billion dollar deficit, and now potentially even more with tariffs coming in in future years, that's over another three thousand dollars in expenses at just the five billion is another three thousand dollars in expenses for every house. And so here we are wrestling with the impact of a hundred and fifty-two dollars in additional impact for an average home in the District of North Vancouver. And I say that just to say the scale is entirely different. The amount of money that is taken off of people's incomes or received through resources or received through all of the sources available to the senior levels of government absolutely dwarfs the resources and, and tools that we have at our disposal to be able to pay for all of the services that you experience. And you, by the time you've walked out of your, walked out of your house or, or head to work, you've already experienced several municipal services, including roads and intersections and sidewalks and parks and, and all of the fire and police services that we offer in the community. And so I will still maintain that we, we still offer good value for the dollar when it comes to municipal services. So with that, I see no further speakers on the matter. I'm prepared to call the question. All those in favor, contrary minded, motion is carried unanimously. Thank you very much, council, for your deliberations on this matter. We do have an opportunity for reports, council, as we've wrapped up the evening with some Would anybody like to make a report? Mr. Stewart, always check with you first. Would you like to make a report? One more.
Your worship, I just wanted to mention that work is going to be commencing on some hydro upgrades, and we're going to see some power outages in, in Delbrook over the next month. I just wanted to make, they're informing the, the residents, but I just wanted to make it a public announcement.
Appreciate that. I was just going to make a very quick report. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend the North Shore Sport Awards, but fortunately, Counselor Ma, who is not able to be with us this evening, was able to represent the district at those awards. It's always exciting to see all of the excellent athletes at all age groups and all sports recognized for their contributions, as well as the coaches and volunteers that make it happen. It's, it's one of those special things. I mean, even though some of the people in the room have reached the highest professional levels of excellence, they all started at a municipal field or a municipal pool or a municipal track or something. And, and so they, 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 it's, it's a point of pride for municipalities, say that the, the, the public low barrier spaces that we provide really are the starting point for all of these excellent athletes that we get to all take some joint pride in going forward. So it's always a great event, and so I just wanted to thank Counselor Ma for representing us there at that event. Don't see any, any other hands? Anybody make, make a report? Okay, well, then we've completed the business of this evening's meeting, and so I will accept adjournment. Moved by Counselor Forbes, accepted. Thank you very much. I just want to pass on my appreciation to staff for the report, providing the reports for our consideration this evening. Thank you to members of public for providing your feedback throughout the week, and thank you to council for your deliberations in these matters. Happy Saint Patrick's Day to those that celebrated. I have to find a place with a green beer now after eight-thirty at night. We'll have to see how we do. But I do just want to say, enjoy your week, have a great night.